Good evening, I'm Arlene Velasco and I'm going to be chairing this meeting tonight, and I call it to order. And first off, we have our public safety reports. We'll start off with the Honolulu Fire Department if they're here.
Yes, we're here, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Captain Joshua Chee, so I'm at the Waikiki Fire Station right on Kapo'ulue. This is our report for October 2025. For fires, we have three structure fires, one wildland brush fire, two nuisance fires, five activated alarms with no fire. Medical emergencies, fifty-nine, seven motor vehicle crashes, collisions, two mountain rescues. And our cooking, or our fire safety tip for this month, for our month of October is cooking safety, especially during these months. Food has a unique way of bringing family and friends together, especially during the holidays, and cooking can be a relaxing activity. However, it is important to be aware that cooking fires are the leading cause of the home fires and home injuries. By following a few of these safety tips, you can prevent these dangerous situations. Stay alert while cooking. If you're sleepy or consume alcohol, avoid using the stove or stove top. Always stay in the kitchen while cooking, never leave the stove and heated appliances unattended. Use a timer to remind yourself to check on your food regularly. Keep combustible items like oven mitts, wooden utensils, food packaging, and towels away from your stove top. And keep children and pets at least three feet away from the cooking area. Alright, that's our report. Now, if you guys got any questions for me?
Any questions from the people in-house? None, how about online? I don't see any questions, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, good night.
Good night. Okay, next we have, um, let's see, the Honolulu Police Department, and we have District Six.
Hello, good evening, my name is Lieutenant Hanuna from Waikiki District Six. The stats for the month are assaults, we had forty last month, thirty-five this month. Another big issue right now is assaults on law enforcement officers, assaults on LEOs, they call it. It's actually the same with three last month and three this month, in Waikiki alone. Burglaries, we had eleven last month and nineteen this month. Drug liquor offenses, we had nineteen last month and fifteen this month. EUIs, we had twenty-two last month, drunk driving, twenty-two last month, nineteen this month. Criminal property damages, we had twenty-seven last month, twenty-four this month. Robberies, we had six last month, five this month. Fefts, one hundred and sixty-three last month, one hundred and nine this month. UMBs, car break-ins, eleven and five this month. Total cost for service, we had three thousand six hundred and eighty-three last month, and this month we had three thousand three hundred and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. I was asked by a member of the Diamond Head Community Garden to request that the police if possible patrol, even if it's just drive by La Lahe Avenue at night, because there's been incidents with people defecating on some of the garden plots there.
In the garden?
In the garden, on their plots, there's pictures to prove it. And so I was asked to request patrols at night if possible. Thank you very much. Any other questions in-house, online? Why it grouped today? Oh, we have one. Go ahead, yes, approach this.
Good evening, my name's Tim Gary. We had a problem with illegal campers down in this end of the park, and the city took care of it. But I noticed when I drove in tonight, at the end where the Blind Library is, which is a state facility, it's filled with tents and people. Most of that is on state property, but some are on city-county property. I've witnessed those people going to the bathroom in the Alawai. So I've asked HPD to coordinate with Mike Lambert, who's the head of the state police, to clean this up. We got canoe clubs down here paddling right now. And if you don't believe me, you can walk down there and witness it yourself. So I'd appreciate it if the neighborhood board would ask the state to implement the law and not allow this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. We have had a lot of conversations in the past with both the city and mentioned to the state about the homeless situation that, right, in that area in particular. So we'll, we will bring it to their attention once again. Anybody else online? Okay, nobody online, well, thank you very much for your report. Then now we go to District Seven. Online? Lieutenant Thompson, are you online? No, no District Seven, if he shows up, we'll go back to him. Next, we have filling, we have one vacant at-large board seat, does anyone here wish to fill that seat? Okay, alright, then we'll move on. Now we're going to go to the approval of meeting minutes. I have a note here from Winston. Recommended. That we approve, leave it's. July, here we go. July, August, and September meetings, minutes, but not October. Does anybody want to second that? Yeah, I moved to approve them.
Discussion?
Discussion? A second?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair?
Yes.
This is Michelle, I'm the Secretary of the Board, and I did very diligently review the July, August, and September minutes, I haven't gotten to the October draft minutes submitted by the NCO. Therefore, I'm hoping that everybody had a chance to see the review copies on the board drive. I left the changes in red, so everybody could see where the changes were made. Once approved, of course, all of this would be converted to regular black and white approved minutes. These are complete minutes, these are not summaries from recordings, they do have the timestamps, which is very convenient for everyone. If they have additional concerns or questions, or interests, are interested in any of the items on the agenda, to see the reactions of the board members and the reactions of the public, the recordings are very important to keep. But they are not required to be held by the board, nor are the summaries, it is the complete minutes that are the requirement under HRS, Hawaii Revised Statute, Section ninety-two dash nine A. And there is another section in the statute, the open meeting statute, Chapter ninety-two dash three point seven B six, that does refer to recordings that may be kept, but once the complete minutes are available, there's no need for summaries or recordings, but I do support keeping the recordings for everybody's interest, thank you.
Alright, thank you. So we have a second for approval of the July, August, and September of 2025 meeting minutes? We have enough people to have a vote? Okay, Margaret?
Yeah. I moved up to approval.
Okay. Is there any public testimony? Or other board, no one's raising their hand? Do we have enough people for a vote? And we have our vote? Um, I think a voice? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hey. Any abstaining? Nope, well then they pass, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The work was worth it.
Great, thank you so much for all that effort. Okay, so now we go on to the Public Interest Reports and Event Announcements. We have the Board of Water Supply, Kathleen?
Aloha, thank you Vice Chair. We had two main breaks in your neighborhood, one on October twenty-first, it was a six-inch at thirty-one oh six Montserrat Avenue, and was actually related to the construction work that we're doing, so the contractor actually fixed it, he broke it and they fixed it. Then we had another one also on the twenty-first, and this was the big one, this is the twenty-inch one we had on Dole Street, right across from Connevi neighborhood pork, and we do apologize, we know that was a huge imposition. And then our, we just want to remind people, when we do have a main break, Board of Water Supply does work as quickly as possible to reduce the impact to customers, public safety, and restore service. And if you're looking for latest updates on main breaks, generally four inches or larger. Information on how repairs are made, please visit the BoardOfWaterSupply.com backslash main breaks. You may also stay informed on Facebook and Nextdoor, and for larger or more impactful main breaks, sign up for HNL Alert. Any questions?
I have a quick question, Kathleen. The, I noticed that there was an article, one of the news reports today, I think, about mentioning that there was a ten percent request for a reduction of water usage.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yes.
Twenty percent.
Yes, well, we're still not recovered from drought, despite the wonderful rain we've had today, yay, thank you. So it takes a while for us to recover, and with parts of the island getting drier, you know, we really need to be careful and conserve. We're not running out of water, but we just want people to be mindful, and our water use this year was much higher than it was the previous two years. And so we're trying to be very proactive and getting the message out and asking people to be mindful of their water use.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone here? Any questions from anyone online? Okay. Michelle?
Yes, aloha Kathleen, long time no see.
Yeah, we just talked, no.
Anyway, um, the, there is a serious consequence that has happened with DLNR along Diamond Head Road. Once they were, the recommendation was made by Board of Water Supply to reduce the irrigation water for the Nalpaca that was so carefully planned and planted by community volunteers over twenty years ago, they completely shut off the irrigation lines, this is state parks, they shut off the irrigation lines, all of the Nalpaca from Flanders Mini Park down to across from the lighthouse died. We have no Nalpaca left, which is one of the coastal plants that can survive and beautify that area. We are now in the midst of replanting, and Prometheus Construction did a rock wall, a rockfall mitigation project, it was over a year ago, and they replanted Nalpaca behind their, their rock wall, their rockfall barriers that they installed, their imitation rock facing, which are much more attractive than the old Jersey barriers. And that Nalpaca grew beautifully, it started to cascade over the top of the barriers. It was beautiful, and then somebody, we don't know who, whether it was state parks or some renegade volunteer organization, came and sheared down the Nalpaca that had been planted under contract by Prometheus, and they provided the irrigation, they made sure that irrigation was working to keep them alive. And now we find the irrigation has been completely shut off, and the sheared Nalpaca has completely died as well. We'd like to know who the criminals are who are destructing this scenic area, which is a national natural landmark and registered historic state monument. And all the volunteers trying so hard to restore this into an indigenous landscape, and that is the end of my comment. I had to get this out to Board of Water Supply, because this is one of the consequences of saying, reduce your irrigation by ten percent point blank, reduce your irrigation by twenty percent point blank, but we don't know the consequences of that.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear what you're saying, Board Member Mattson, but when it comes to the balance between protecting our potable water supply for drinking purposes, health and safety versus watering plants, I don't disagree that the plants in the Nalpaca, and it seems like somebody went too far on the other side of it, because I agree, Nalpaca's not a thirsty plant, so it doesn't make sense to me that somebody would have done that. Actually, Nalpaca is exactly what we would want you to be planting.
Thank you.
And we have... Rafi?
Yes, I'm here, and thank you. Yeah. Uh, to, I have something interested to know, that I was thinking, what about this water outbreak on St. Louis Dole Street on November ninth? Is it some contractor or someone else, something happened?
I'm sorry Rafi, could you repeat your question, please?
Uh, November ninth, there is a water outbreak in the St. Louis Heights and nearby Dole Street and some part of the Kaemuki Street. Is it about the, someone contractor broke in, something happened, or some other issues about the water break? You know, we have it shut down for a long hour in our condo and area related, so...
Oh, are you talking about the Dole Street break?
Yes, Dole Street break.
Okay, okay, no, it's just, it's an old pipe, and unfortunately, we've had a couple of breaks over the few last five or six years. Mr. Lau has asked our Capital Projects team to accelerate the design of a new pipe, so we are actively looking to fix it. It's not going to be done anytime soon, these projects, it's a big, big project, and it's going to take a while, but he has asked our team to move that up in terms of priority.
Oh, there is any, we can expect some more shutdown in soon?
I, I can't tell you, I pray that we won't have another break, but I can't promise that.
Okay, thank you Kathleen, thank you Vice Chair.
Okay, it looks like Laura, are you ready? You have a question?
Hi, yeah, well, just a quick comment, I'd just like to congratulate Kathleen for her award this year from the Hawaii Thousand Friends as community activism. So I think all of you people on the Diamond Head Board know how good she is, and congratulate her also, thank you.
Well, back at you Laura, Laura's also being co-honored at the same event on Saturday night, so congratulations back to you.
Wow, congratulations to the two of you.
Thank you.
That's great. We appreciate all, we appreciate activism, especially right now.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too. Oh, Daisy, do you have a question, one more?
Yeah, this is a big mahalo to Kathleen Board of Water Supply and the contractors, last, yeah, it was last week, but we had two days that they had to shut the water down to the residents, and they were nice enough to let us know the day before that they will be shutting off because they need to connect the pipes, etc. So we're grateful that they gave us advance notice, so we could plan our days, appreciate it, they did a great job, thank you.
Thank you, I'll share that with the team, mahalo.
Yes, I'd like to second that, they've done a really great job with that repair all along Mazarat, it's been smooth and run really well.
I'll let them know, thank you.
Okay, next we have the Kapilani Community College, is she here? Lisa? Are you ready? Lisa? Okay, um, well, Lisa, when you are ready, why don't you just, when we go on to the next subject, just mention that you're ready.
I'm so sorry, hello?
Okay, great.
Hi, hi Arlene, Lisa from Community College. My camera's not working for some reason, I'm on a different computer today, but, thank you for your time, but I have nothing to report actually from Kapilani at the moment.
Okay, alright, well, thank you very much for attending. Okay, next we have announcements of public events, races, parades.
Sorry, Vice Chair, this is Daisy, I just wanted to comment to Lisa, I looked at the new buildings, the restaurant, the auditorium, and the innovation centers, the colors they chose seems to match the natural surroundings, the mountains and the forestry, so good job in selecting the colors, thank you.
Thank you Daisy, I'll let our leadership know, maybe as well, too. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Daisy. And now we have the announcement of public events, we have the Turkey Trot on November, on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-seventh, seven AM to eleven AM at the Kapilani Park, it's a fun thing to do. Then we have the Kapo'ulue Cleanup, Saturday, November fifteenth. I'm trying to find out where it, where people are gathering to get supplies, like bags and gloves and pickers, or if you're supplying your own, and I was wondering if someone who's in the city could give a little more details on that? Is someone from the Turkey Trot here? Oh, okay, then let's go, sorry about that.
Hi, yeah, my name's Andrew Lawrence, I represent the Honolulu Marathon Clinic, not to be confused with the Honolulu Marathon, the Marathon Clinic. We have a Turkey Trot organizing committee, this year on Thanksgiving Day, we're going to be running our, I think it's fifty-second annual running of the Turkey Trot, and we just wanted, so we just found out from, and thank you for taking us at a rather late notice, we got the other, the Kahala Waiwai Neighborhood Board, and then Department of Transportation Services told us we needed to also speak with you folks. So we're just here to inform you about the race, the event, seek any, or, you know, support any questions or thing we can do for you, and then see if you can support our event. So basically, it's going to take place Thanksgiving Day, it's Thursday, November the twenty-seventh, at Kapilani Park. The setup will begin at four thirty AM, which it always does, but the event itself will start at seven AM and be completely done by eleven. This year, the event will go through your area, we're going to have two runs around Kapilani Park, they're going to, the part that will be on the road will be to the Honolulu Marathon finish line, it will move on to Mazarat, and then to Paki Avenue, and then just around the park. So the people who are doing one of the events, they will go like twice. We expect that to mostly be closed, depending on where the people walk, or by ten o'clock, but we're going to have the roads opened up as soon as possible. I think they're going to be closing the roads at seven, maybe seven fifteen, depending. So just a little bit about the Marathon Clinic, so for the last fifty or more years, they've been training runners from the very beginning, just get up off the couch to finish the marathon, and also people who are experienced runners, that's nine months of free exercise and health training and information for our community. This is the only fundraising event we do, we're not collecting any money at the park, that's all been done online, we're expecting about eight hundred people so far this year, eight hundred, nine hundred people, last year it was twelve hundred and something, so anyway, that's kind of the size of the event, and then, yeah, so we invite you to join us, there's just, there's four events this year, one will be an eight, a one-mile fast run, that means that somebody's going to dress up like a turkey and run as fast as they can, while the fastest runners who can run less than eight miles, less than an eight-minute mile, are going to try to chase and catch that person, and will have the honor of saying we beat all you other turkeys, so good for them. And then there'll be some prizes, there's going to be a five-mile run from Kapilani Park, around the park, out to Triangle, and then back down to the Honolulu Marathon Clinic finish line, which is by the statue of the Queen. And then there will also be a five K, which will be twice around the park, and then just a fun walk stroll for kids and everybody else, it's one point eight miles once around the park. And there's going to be a costume contest, anybody wants to come out in Thanksgiving-themed costumes, registration deadline is the day before, November the twenty-sixth, five PM, we'll have finisher medals, and that's basically a summary of the event, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think that what we maybe need from you folks is, you know, to be able to address any concerns you may have, and then either an email or vote of support in the minutes should be sufficient if you approve.
Do you need the vote of support?
Just if you, if there's any objections, we'll take care of them, but I mean, I suppose otherwise, as long as there's no objections, the department will see that you've accepted the...
Can we do a quick?
Sure.
Both, can we just a motion to support them? Okay.
Chair, I have a question.
Hi.
Okay, Margaret? Who seconded? Discussion, Margaret?
Yeah, I had a question, are you blocking off parking spaces?
Uh, for right along the Makai side of the park, yes we are, that will be part of the run, and the, probably along Paki Avenue, yes. Actually, actually, you're right, yes, all around the park, there will be blocking parking spaces, but just around the park, and then up by Triangle Park, it, no, no, take it back, no, you're right, all along the course, the parking will be blocked, yes, thank you for that.
Alright, Linda?
Thank you for coming and telling everybody what's happening, people have missed that. So you'll be finished at what time, everybody?
So, so the event officially ends at eleven, but basically, we're going to have somebody go along the, with the last people, we're going to have what they call a sweeper, and so we'll be able to tell the different course marshals along the way, we're finished, we're done, this is the last person, and then we'll start opening up the roads, taking down the tables, all that. By, officially closed by eleven, we think that'll be a little bit earlier.
Okay, that's great. So you used the parking one, two, and three in front of Shell, does that take up, is that all full?
So one and two, I think, is what we're taking up, it is full, and then, you know, three is open for the public, I believe, but it tends to fill up, as you know, manage with eight, you know, nine hundred people, that, yeah, they're going to, in various forms.
So you're not blocking off parking on Lahe Avenue?
Well, let's see, so...
I've never known it to be blocked on Lahe during races.
They did, recently.
Oh, that wasn't our race, so early on Thanksgiving, oh, so...
No, I'm not saying you did personally, that somebody did, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, Department of Transportation Services is being very careful this year with public safety, you know, there's been a lot of pedestrian and other fatalities, so I can't speak to that, but I do know, as was asked, all along the, the race route, at least on one side, the parking will be blocked, but up and down, yeah, from the park onto Kapilani, I'm sorry, from the park, from Kapilani Park to Triangle Park, there's going to be one lane open for traffic, so that will, that will be open, the parking on the Makai side will be blocked.
Will Mazarat be closed, the parking?
Along Mazarat, at least the park side will be closed for parking, I believe, yeah, not sure about the other side.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Alright, any other questions in person? How about online? Alright, let's, we already have a seconded? Okay, are there any objections? Alright, the motion is adopted, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support, thank you.
Alright, next we have the Kapo'ulue Cleanup, I don't see a name on this, but that's just... But that's just an announcement. But, um, I, there, there was, when I tried to look for the details, as I was saying before, I couldn't find it, but maybe the city can give us where people should meet. And next we have, um, I just got a notice that there's another race than the...
This is me, Rafia.
Hi, Rafia.
Yeah, I have something to tell about the Kapahulu Cleanup. It is a sign-up, uh, event from the city and county, because I sign up. So I have received their email in detail. I need to sign up a form, and we have to meet in the Alaway Golf Course. So it is a sign-up volunteer cleanup program. So we need to sign up. So I received already the email from them. I already completed my sign-up.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Velasco.
All right, great, thank you. Um, and then I have noticed that the Nawehini Race is going to be happening on, uh, let's see, it's going to be happening at Capilani Park, Sunday, January 26th at 7:00 AM. And they're giving us plenty of advance notice. And then, okay, now let's go on to... I don't think we have any 2025 major parades or street activities, um, announcements. So now we're on to the presentation. I see Mike here. Mike Formby.
Thank you, Mike Formby. I appreciate you guys having me tonight. I have a couple of boards, and I'm not sure whether you want me to face them towards the camera, so if people are watching, they can see. Anthony, did we give the handouts already? So you have the handouts, and the handouts have these maps in them.
Uh, Vice Chair Velasco, Acting Chair?
Yes.
I have a question about, um, Anthony providing handouts on behalf of the city. Is he working for the city, or is he our parks chair, Parks Committee Chair?
I think this was a, a city.
I work for the city.
Yeah, he works for the city.
Oh, okay, this is interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, I think for the purposes of voting on the resolution, Anthony would have to recuse himself.
Right, and I, I will take that task on.
I've, uh, submitted a conflict of interest form with the Ethics Office.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but what I wanted to present to the board today, actually tonight, was a proposal that the administration is currently considering. And it has to do with the history of the Cap- Capilani Park Trust and our desire to continue the Ocean Safety Headquarters on Leahy Avenue. And in order to do that, we would have to propose other lands that are not currently in the trust or dedication into the trust, and then take those lands out. And that's the proposal that basically we're making tonight. And I gave you a two-page fact sheet that provides history of the legal precedent for this. And it goes all the way back to 1988, when the zoo had a Burger King concession that was challenged as being a lease that was not consistent with the trust. And the court at the time determined that, in fact, it was in violation of the trust. They admonished the city and the state for not consulting with the court. Subsequently, in 1991, the court was advised that there were other properties that were legally on trust lands but were not serving a trust purpose, one of those being the Kapahulu Fire Department. And I think you're all familiar with that location. And so at that point, the city began a process of discussing the substitution of other lands for that land, and went back to the court. And in 1994, began the process of looking at what parcels could be proposed in exchange. And that's when they proposed the two parcels on which the Ocean Safety Department currently operates on Leahy Avenue. So those were put into the trust. The Kapahulu Fire Department was taken out of the trust. And so what we're proposing today is that we put in a much larger parcel, a 2.21 acre parcel into the trust, and we take out the .35 acres, which are two parcels, that currently hold the Ocean Safety Department. And on the second page, at the end of the fact sheet, I gave you some reasons for doing that, and there are many reasons for doing that, one of which is we, we need to continue ocean safety operations. Since they became a department, they actually are growing very slowly, but they're growing, and they have a need for more office space. And for us right now to bring in, what we're, what we're planning is bringing in mobile units that would basically be on top of the existing parking lot, but would provide them additional office space for their staff. And to do that would actually be growing an existing operation that is inconsistent with the park trust. So we don't want to do that. But at the same time, we don't believe those two parcels, .35 acres, are particularly beneficial to the trust when they're surrounded by private residences. So our proposal is, at this time, that we take those two smaller parcels out, .35 acres, and we put in a city parcel that is 2.21 acres at the entrance to Capilani Park, and we dedicate that into the trust. And that parcel, because it's not currently part of the trust, could be a potential site for an ocean safety headquarters. They need to be near the ocean. They need to be near the water. And we actually don't want to develop on oceanfront property, even though we would set it back and we would elevate it up so that it would not be within a tsunami or flood zone. We don't want to do that. The preference is to be back. The current ocean safety headquarters is not in an SMA zone. The 2.21 acres is in an SMA zone. So it's about saving CIP money. For us to build a new ocean safety headquarters would probably be in the range of 20 to 30 million dollars. We don't believe we need to, need to spend taxpayer money to do that. We think the better thing to do is to stay where they're at, take those two parcels out, and put a larger parcel in. So we just started the process. You're the first group that we've talked to publicly about this. We just started the community engagement process. After we go through the community engagement process, and we'll go to the city council, we'll make the proposal to the city council as the trustees of the trust. They know that we're coming here tonight to talk to the neighborhood board. We sent them a letter. But it's a process, and at some point, when we're comfortable that the community feels like this is a transaction that benefits the trust as well as the city and county and the taxpayers and the users of the park, then we'll go to the city council and propose it. And if the city council decides to approve the proposal, then it goes to the court. And the court gets to make the ultimate decision and issue instructions to the city and county as whether or not we can substitute. And I gave you an example in the fact sheet of the last time that the court approved substitution, and it basically was for seven acres for seven acres. And so now we're proposing .35 for 2.21 acres. So we believe it's, it's a better deal for the, for the users of the park. It, it restricts that 2.21 acres for park purposes only, could never be used for other than park purposes. We believe it's a great location for park users, and we think the Leahy Avenue Ocean Safety Headquarters location is not optimal for park users right now. And by the way, this administration is in favor of growing the park, not shrinking the park. So you know there are private residences that are currently around the Ocean Safety Headquarters, next to Paki Hali and along that street. You know, the preference would be that one day we can continue to grow the park and expand the trust for the benefit of the people. But for today and for the foreseeable future, it doesn't make sense to force ocean safety out of there. It's been 20 to 30 million building a new headquarters. It would probably take between five and 10 years to build, and at the same time, not provide meaningful park space. So I'm open for questions from the board.
Um, anybody have questions here?
And by the way, can I just offer that? I know it's on the agenda. I believe it's on the agenda as an action item. Is it, Anthony? Yeah, so I don't know that the board needs to take action tonight. There's no urgency to that. We're not going to the council right away. So if, if the board, I don't know how many board members are online, but if the board want to, wants to mull this over and talk about it and, and, uh, do some research on, on, you're more than welcome to do that. We're not coming last minute and calling for a vote and asking you to, you know, to go along with it until you've done your due diligence.
Um, yeah, hey, thanks for bringing this to our attention. This seems like a big deal, and I think we'd all appreciate some time to think about it. So, um, my name's Chad. Forgive me, I'm a little bit new to this whole process here. But, uh, just to clarify, the current Ocean Safety Headquarters is part of the park trust.
It was, it was dedicated into the park as part of that 1991 to 1994 transaction. Prior to that, was not in the trust.
And the problem is developing the site while it's part of the trust. Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
And then switching for the larger parcel here near, near Queens Beach.
Correct.
Who is the current owner of that parcel?
City and County of Honolulu. So that parcel is not dedicated into the trust, and that's, that's, that's what we're offering here. I mean, we own both parcels. We own the two parcels where Ocean Safety has its headquarters, and we own the oceanfront parcel.
Gotcha. And so the idea is to kind of expand on the current location where Ocean Safety is located?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
I'd like to mention, I live right across from that. And so right now, it's basically, um, they occupy just one of the lots, and then the other lot is kind of empty. They use it for storing the new lifeguard towers and things like that.
And the proposal would be, once those lifeguard towers are eventually disposed of, to put a couple of trailers there. We'd like to add four office spaces, and possibly one of them would have a bathroom in it. And I don't know, I don't know if you guys have been inside the Ocean Safety Headquarters, but I would say to you that if you want to, you're more than welcome to go there and go inside, and you'll understand the reason that we're requesting those parcels be taken out of the trust, and that is that Ocean Safety is in need of expansion. And the history of it is, and it's in the fact sheet, that in 2024, when the mayor proposed that it become a department, it no longer was a stepchild of EMS. And as a stepchild of EMS, it really never got the full attention that it needed. And now it needs that attention. And I think as a department, for first responders, we need to give them the office space that they need. But you should all go there and ask Kurt Lager, the current director, if you can walk in. And I think you'll be shocked at what you see. You'll be shocked to see the conditions in which they operate day to day and live. And, and they've developed an attitude of making do with what they have. But that's not acceptable to this administration. They deserve more. So we're, we're looking at all of their facilities around the island, but their headquarters, they're literally sitting on top of themselves in that headquarters. It's not good.
And, um, I see we have, anybody else here? Yes. Um, that's, Linda, did you want to say something? Then we'll get to you, Linda.
Thank you for coming tonight and presenting to us. I know you're between a rock and a hard place for ocean safety. I've been in there. So, um, this is a, a lot of, uh, big change. And to the trust, it's legal, and there's a lot to do. Um, it would take some time. And then for you to actually change things to how, what you would like to have at the Ocean Safety, it's going to be a long project, I would think. Um, the Ocean Safety is still in Diamond Head Special District, so we would have those laws to deal with, no matter what's there.
That's correct.
So, um, I think it's going to take some time to go over this and see, well, actually, you know, pa- part of it is what you want to do there and see how that goes along with Diamond Head Special District, to have a, a business in the middle of the, our neighborhood. You know, and, um, prior, I know you, you've got to develop somewhere, and I know you've been looking. So, um, it's going to take some time, I think, to, to get to, uh, really go over this and see what's happening and what we need and what we have, and the best way to go about it.
Yeah, and, and, um, Board Member Wong, I appreciate that. I'll tell you that I, they've been there, I believe. I don't know that I have it in here. They've been operating out of that location, I think, since 1986. And that's, that's part of the concern, is that the time it was proposed to go into the trust, the court knew that there was an operation there. And for us to take that out and turn it into parkland would be at considerable expense and time and money. And so we're sort of trying to be practical here. I mean, not sort of, we are trying to be practical about what's in the best interest of the taxpayers. But the current headquarters, we're fortunate that we have them for ocean safety, but they're just not adequate for the future. They're just not. And so the tem- the temporary solution, which is the quickest we know, is to bring in mobile workspace. So basically, your temporary offices, connect them to the sewer line, the water lines, but not to do anything major, not to be digging or do anything that would involve tearing up concrete and archaeological inventory surveys, things of that nature.
All right, um, we have one gentleman.
Yeah, good evening, Mike.
Hi, Tim.
I have a proposal for you. You know, we had a tsunami scare. All of Ocean Safety evacuated their stuff to KCC, out of the inundation zone. They took everything, and they went up to KCC, and they stood up there and hung out till 10:30 at night. I propose that we move, we give this site back to the park, and we move headquarters for Ocean Safety to Kai Maki, maybe 22nd Avenue, where the police station is, city land. And also, the captain's office underneath the naditorium is a death trap.
It is.
And nobody's done anything about that.
We're working on that.
The, actually, the power went out, and I provided my generator to them so they could keep the lights on. That's how bad it is. So I, my, my suggestion is to give this location back to the park. Tear it down, put a garden in there or whatever, and move Ocean Safety up to Kai Maki. That way, if there's a hurricane or another tsunami, we can make it a center for first responders with the police, the fire, and Ocean Safety. They all evacuated up to KCC anyway. So why are we going to build and say 20, 30 million dollars for a place? That sounds excessive, and the timeframe, too. So that's just my idea. You guys are going to be gone by the time any of this is happening.
Not me. I don't know about you, but not me.
Well, I mean, your administration's not going to be there. You're saying five, 10 years. You got three years left.
So, so... Let me respond to that. Um, I appreciate that, Tim. I always like people that have other ideas. Uh, the first thing is, what we're looking for is a low-cost, near-term solution that will be a bridge or an eventual solution. You can always move lands in and out of the trust. Those residents around this property are probably not going anywhere in the near term. So what we're proposing is a solution that allows us to bring in mobile offices, expand the headquarters, make functional use of where they're at while we work on a longer-term solution. What you're talking about is something that would take the city and county a long time to do. Meanwhile, we're sitting on land that belongs, we don't have to put it back in the trust. It's in the trust. And it shouldn't be in the trust because it's not the best property. So we're offering a huge expansion of trust lands, 2.21 acres for .35. So I invite you all that haven't been to the headquarters, go walk there, and then go walk to the oceanfront parcel, 2.21 acres, and say, if Tim is right, we're not going to be here when this is done, 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, for that 10-year or 15-year period, what do you think would be more beneficial for park users over the next 10 to 15 years? for park users over the next 10 to 15 years? The .35 acres where the headquarters is at or the 2.21 acres at the entrance to Kapilani Park? I think you'll see that it's a practical proposal. What Tim's talking about might be a long range, the optimal proposal, but it's not something that the city can do in the near term. And so I think we're proposing, we're proposing something that is practical, functional and as low cost as possible to the taxpayers.
All right, we have somebody else in the audience?
Hi, my name is Stephen. He, Tim had mentioned about when during the tsunami war, they went to KCC. What about the lands by Diamond Head just off of that? That's all part of Fort Ruga. You could put temporary, you're talking about building temporary offices. That's a perfect area. It's much closer than Kai Maki. It's right up the road. All right. And this is all public land right there or state land that could be utilized for.
Yeah. No, I hear you. I, I think the misconception there and honestly, if you haven't, if you haven't walked in my shoes and sat in my position when I headed DTS or now when I head the city, the managing director's office, you don't, you think of stuff like that and you think that it's easy. But none of that is easy. Going to the University of Hawaii and asking them to establish a headquarters on state land is very difficult. And our own ordinance is prohibit us from using CIP money on lands that are not city and county lands. So when you propose stuff like that, at the surface, it sounds very simple and practical and logical. But the truth is everywhere people like me look left and right, there are reasons that you can't get it done, especially in the near term. And if you're going to get it done in the long term, it usually means you have to change laws or get exceptions. So I agree with you. I mean, higher ground would be more preferable. But the truth is, we have a headquarters today. We have bodies in it. They operate very well out of Leahy Avenue. We're asking for it to be a bridge until at some point we can find them another location. They own a lot in Kaka'aco. But it's in the SMA zone. And it's currently a parking lot. And to be able to take that and turn it into an Ocean Safety Headquarters, budget for it and get things done is a long time. And I'll also say to you, the other thing that we know, Mayor and I and our team, is that the CIT, CIP demands on the city for infrastructure because of climate change, the stormwater system for Waikiki, being able to address the potential of a flood and the inability of the stormwater system to take the waters out of Waikiki into the Alawide, the watershed, we don't even have the CIP funds to do those projects. And so the last thing we need to be doing is picking a site that requires us to spend 30 million dollars on a headquarters when we have one right now on property that's not very functional for the park. So it is a practical solution. I'm not saying it's the best long range solution, but it's a practical solution.
Okay, thank you. Now, Michelle, online?
Oh my goodness, I don't know where to begin. And I don't want to take up the whole rest of the meeting. Mike, it's so nice to see you. We've, we've known each other for a long, long time since the Aloha Tower Advisory Council and you as the, the Harbors Director and then going on to other things and now with the city administration. And I've always respected your responsiveness and your honesty about everything. And I hope we can continue on that path. First of all, oh, just so many things here. Let's, let's just look at the current parcel. It's small. It's, it's actually two parcels, one for storage and one for offices. And you're proposing a staff, a headquarters there. May it be mobile structures or otherwise. It sounds like a precedent for a very large facility that the city will build within this very residential neighborhood on Leahy Avenue that has had its share of problems, beginning with Mary Moriarty taking over the street for her own personal parking enterprise. But now we have a proposal for, let's see, 294 Ocean Safety lifeguards and a $23 million operation on a third of an acre. This, this doesn't make a lot of sense within this area because it, it isn't even compatible with the existing surroundings. Not what you need, not what the city needs, not what we all need for Ocean Safety, including the lifeguards who we totally respect. And, and of course, we know many of them very well. So I just want to point out that during my tenure as a member of the Kaka'aco Makai Advisory Committee, and you're smiling now, right? We had approved headquarters for Ocean Safety at Kiwala Basin. And you may be correct in saying it's in a, you know, SMA zone or whatever, but that is a central location for all ocean rescue systems to access not only Diamond Head and Queens Beach and Waikiki, but all the way, all the way along the coast in a central location to hospitals, to emergency services. And that was approved by the HCDNA, that master plan. And we're still wondering why Ocean Safety Headquarters is not being moved forward at that location and why now it's being proposed on a little residential street on two small lots which can't even offer the capacity that the city needs for their lifeguard headquarters operations. Could you please explain what the ultimate plan is? Is it, is it a four story, five story building on these two lots? And where are you going to store all the unused, unused lifeguard towers that you have there? And what's going to happen? We, we don't have any answers here.
Michelle, perhaps we need to have a separate meeting about this with this community because I can see that this is going to go on for a very long time. And we could all, like Mike already suggested, you know, study, maybe, you know, call you, maybe we could have a meeting, you know, we can announce it. So we could have a subcommittee meeting about this, Parks and Recreation.
Well, absolutely. I propose that we have a joint committee meeting, planning and zoning in Parks and Recreation. And we do know that the current Parks and Recreation committee chair does have a conflict because he now works for the city. So
Right.
Are you planning to, as, are you vice chair of that committee? Are you planning to take his place for this particular issue?
I am planning to take his place for this.
All right. And the other thing that Mike mentioned was definitely this has to go before the Attorney General's Office as they are parents patriate to the trust issues. Anything that the city council is involved in, even though their duties are separate and distinct as Kapilani Park trustees, if they're involved in any decisions concerning the Kapilani Park Trust and trust lands, the state attorney general must be involved.
That's true. That's not disputed, Michelle. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. And, and Michelle, can I just make a very brief response to Michelle since she did ask a question and I appreciate the question, Michelle. And we do have a longstanding relationship of mutual respect. Michelle, what we're proposing at, at Leahy is no different than what they currently do there. I mean, that is the current headquarters for Leahy. They just are sitting on top of each other. So we're proposing the ability to bring in some mobile offices. I said possibly four and one that would have a bathroom in it so that they could continue to operate there until we're in a position to find an optimal location for them. Right now, technically, them being there in that old school is in violation of the trust. So rather than kick the can down the road, as it has been since 1986, and continue to allow Ocean Safety to operate out of there, we're saying, help us put more land into the trust, do a swap, and at some point in the future, you can claim those parcels back. Hopefully, when the neighboring homeowners are ready to sell or abandon those residents, we can turn that entire block there where the community gardens is into more trust land. That's the goal. But it's a long term vision. It's not a short term vision. And what we're asking is for a short term accommodation.
Mike, if you could put that in writing, I'd appreciate it.
I will for you, Michelle. I promise.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we have another hand up online. Angie?
Me or?
Angie Knight?
Sorry, Laura, can I go? Do you want to go first or do you want me to go?
Okay. I just have one quick thing. I haven't heard you mention really the people who are really responsible for the trust. And I know Jack Gilmar for years has been a prime person in this. And I would like to see anything that's going on with a discussion to have the trust involved in anything that you're planning to do. So that's just my comment right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. We did reach out to the Preservation Society. And, and they are, by the way, unavailable, but they're, they're working with Anthony actually on scheduling a meeting for us, I believe in December, right, Anthony? Yeah, in December. So, so we're not going to, we're not going to fail to talk to anybody that is important or wants to be just talked to about this.
Okay, then we have.
Vice Chair or Chair.
Michelle.
Just a clarification here. Kapilani Park Preservation Society is a nonprofit organization. They are not the Kapilani Park Trust. The Kapilani Park Trust is a separate entity that was created ironically by one of my ancestors after the overthrow of the monarchy. He was a member of the Kings Privy Council. And at, at the, at the point of the establishment of the trust, after many years later, the, the court was involved in approving the city council as the Kapilani Park trustees, not Kapilani Park Preservation Society nonprofit organization. They definitely have a stake in this because they have been involved in court cases. I have known one of the original presidents, Alan Vornoff, personally. He was my mentor in a lot of this. And we definitely need to hear where Kapilani Park Preservation Society stands as a nonprofit on this.
Yes, Michelle.
We also need to have our committees involved. And I agree with you. Acting Chair Velasco, we should, we should refer this to the two committees. Thank you.
And we will make sure we include everybody that has an interest that they can make it to the meeting. We'll pick a time that works for everybody.
Including Mike.
Including Mike. Of course. Any, okay, now we have anybody else online?
There, can I ask my question? Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a quick question because I got kind of lost during it, though I did appreciate it. Are you guys proposing to, I got confused if you're trying to move from the .35 to the 2.2 or if you're moving from the 2.2 to the .35? Or is it neither? Did I miss all of it?
It's, it's actually neither. We're planning, the proposal is to stay at the .35 for now, but to expand it slightly, not to occupy the 2.21. That would be for the benefit of park users only.
Okay, that's where I thought I lost you. Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have comments?
Just a quick question. How much additional personnel do you envision to be in the temporary office space?
Yeah. So the number, actually, when we, when we agreed to put the department together, the, the number that would grow at the headquarters was very small. So I think the total number is something maybe between five and six people. It's, it's not a huge expansion of the headquarters. It's just, I invite all of you to go see it. If you walk in there, I don't think most of you would be comfortable working in that environment. It's, it's that, it's that crowded. And so go see it. We're just trying to give them more room. And it's not that we're saying they're going to stay there forever and they're forever going to live in cramped quarters. But we know that the solution to a headquarters that they deserve takes a lot more time. And so we don't want to make them live in that small school for the next 10 to 15 years.
Thank you. I, I would like to mention that I do know of another piece of property that's in this area, right next to the Diamond Head Community Garden. And it's a dilapidated house. It's owned by the city. And we have been told that it's going to be, that they, the people there have been notified that they need to vacate and that that's going to become part of the Diamond Head Community Garden. So there's already an expansion of
That's right.
the garden. So we really appreciate that, the community does. I know it. So.
So I want to thank the board for allowing me to come tonight. I'm happy to come back. Anthony can, can let me know what date you're ready to talk more. We can bring Kurt Lager from the Ocean Safety Department, whoever you want, let us know. We'll come back and talk more.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
And I do encourage everyone to go visit the facilities because it is, it's something to see. Thank you very much, Mike. Yes. So now we have the mayor's representative. Anton's here. Nice to see you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. I want to always, as I start out, I always want to point out the mayor's newsletter that you can see at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. Some of the key items were that you've witnessed in the news is Skyline Segment 2 opened up for service and that kind of takes us through the shipyard, all the way past Honolulu Airport. And, and then a new bus system around that to transfer people to new locations as it continues to expand. Also, we opened an early childcare center on the Honolulu Holly campus was, we had the center that was above the parking lot and there's an extensive parking lot renovation that needs to happen. And I'm glad we were able to open up the childcare center. Childcare is in my department and we didn't want to lose all those seats and, and it's affordable childcare. So that's good that we could able to keep that open. Childcare's issue is really about access and affordability. It's, it's very hard for some families. Also, there's an announcement, the new sewer rates go into effect on January 1st of 2026 for Oahu residents. I'd also like to announce that on Friday, November 28th, the Royal Hawaiian Band will be having a Christmas celebration concert at the Neil Blaisdell Concert Hall. It's at seven o'clock, doors open at six. It's free to the public. And I don't, with, with, there's some repair going on in Honolulu Holly and the childcare center. We've moved some of the city lights right there to Thomas Square. So you'd be able to actually, well, throughout the season, but that night as well, be able to enjoy the free concert and then go next door to Thomas Square Park. There's, there's really a nice lineup of, of entertainers in addition to the band, the Royal Hawaiian Band. So I know I'll be there. Hope to see some of you. There also is a new system, like we, we put in different systems for people access. You can sign up and the same at, on the governor's newsletter site slash signup for all the press releases. So you could get all the, every time we release a, an item for a press release, you could get it sent to you and, and see it. So if you're interested in doing that, go to that same site of the mayor's newsletter where it says signup and sign up for the press releases. I've kind of had a busy month and a lot of the, running down a lot of your questions you had and, and Linda and I have talked and everything else about different things. I will tell you that I did invite Director Laura Thielen to this meeting. She's out of town for this month on some well deserved rest and, and vacation. I'll keep that invitation there for her for either the December, if you're going to meet in December or the January meeting. There was talk about the irrigation system. I forwarded that to Parks and Rec about why that was turned off. And it turns out that it's connected to the shower system down at the beach. And when the irrigation system was running, there was no shower. And so they're trying to figure out what's the right thing to do about that. I will give them the feedback of what I listened to when, when the border water supply was up. And I'll try to get back to you on what they can do about that. I'll try to get back to you on what they can do about that. There was a question regarding the Biki Biki Station relocation request, and the residents requested that the city remove and relocate the Biki Biki Station on Kanaaina Avenue due to the traffic congestion in the area. The response really to that is, there isn't a plan to do that. They've looked at that, and they want it to keep to be a bike-friendly city, and so they don't have any plans at this time to move that station. There was also questions around the Biki Biki Station about what the city would address the no parking signage vandalism in this neighborhood, and what solutions can the city implement to discourage and prevent illegal parking on the avenue and in the surrounding neighborhood. And so HPD said from September 25th to October 14th, District 7 officers made checks on the avenue and issued warnings for three violations. Officers will continue to monitor the area and take enforcement action when violations are observed. As always, if you witness something, a violation, please call 911. Also, DTS is conducting an investigation, which will require research, site inspections, and analysis of the area's traffic collision history. And upon completion, DTS will take the necessary actions to identify any needs or concerns and appreciate your patience. Also, there was the question about, there were raised concerns about vehicles illegally parking on sidewalks and nearby intersections like Oluulu Street and along Wyndham Avenue. Many parked vehicles and some boats obstruct unpaved sidewalk areas which block pedestrians and wheelchairs from safely passing through without having to enter the roadway and vehicles parked nearby intersections. And again, they, from September 25th to October 14th, personnel made checks of the various areas along Fourth Avenue and issued four citations and two warnings for violations. They'll continue to monitor the area, and as always, if you see a violation, please call 911. We are unable to report the requested parking enforcement numbers because they don't track those by location. DTS also said they will be conducting this investigation, which I spoke of earlier, and then will continue to monitor that area and make adjustments as the investigation proceeds. There was concerns raised about a homeless encampment growing along the Alaui Canal by the library, and those individuals harming others. And can HPD enforce park closure and trespassing ordinance for individuals who are living in this area? How many incidents has HPD responded to in this area since January 2025? And then somebody mentioned that somebody had, by word of mouth, that there were plans to build a homeless shelter at the Alaui Golf Course entrance. Does the city or state have plans to build a homeless shelter in the neighborhood? So District 7 officers constantly enforce park rules, and you know, that whole side that was, had 11 encampments, we've removed. On that side, there are still some on the waterside, right there by the canal. I looked at that tonight. They, from September 25th to October 14th, they issued 30 criminal citations and affected two arrests in this area. Citations are not tracked by location, therefore, we cannot offer enforcement numbers for a particular location, but in that area, that's how many they did overall. District 7 personnel have issued over 1,800 criminal citations for various park and sidewalk violations since January 1st, 2025. And the answer about the shelter is there are no plans by the city or state to build a shelter in that area. I'd be very aware of it was because I'd be the one leading that effort. There was Vice Chair Velasco, you had that issue about the Gold Coast and the condominiums and the seawall rise. And so, you know, there's a lot of answers in the report that are the reflective answers, but I have the deputy director of DPP is going to go and do an inspection.
Okay, great.
And when we get that inspection done, then we can see what action needs to be taken.
Yeah, I'm particularly concerned about the Seabreeze condominium.
Seabreeze?
Yeah, because that's the one that has, it's right on the sand, there's no seawall in front of it, and you can actually see what appears to be the foundation.
Yeah. So I asked Brian Gallagher, who's the deputy director, to call me, and I go with him.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So much.
Food truck operations, Vice Chair Velasco also raised concerns about a food truck operating without a permit by the Diamond Head Lighthouse, and are the food trucks allowed to operate along Diamond Head? And DPP didn't finish that investigation, so they just asked your patience. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. I did see in, within the last month, that there is a health sticker on that truck now, where there wasn't one before. But I was wondering just about the location they park where the lookout is, and there's a lot of tour buses that go there, and there's no restroom facility there. So I am kind of concerned about the health aspect of it.
Yeah, those health stickers are issued by the state, right? The Health Department.
All right.
Right, the city doesn't have a health department.
Okay.
Right. There was also a question about future events, parking restrictions in the neighborhood. There was requested a list of upcoming concerts and events in Waikiki. So November 25th, Wine Airlines Mahalo event is through the 14th through 16th, and there's an event on November 15th. Dana Halemele is on November 21st through 23rd. There's an event on November 22nd. And in December, the Youth Challenge Graduation, there's a Sunday event. It says December 25th, but it says the event is actually on the 7th. We must have passed that. Did that happen? I don't know. Okay. Restricted permits for events and the status of permits that will occur on city roadways can be found at the honolulu.gov/dts/streetusage, and you can look that up. Request for traffic cameras on Kapahulu Avenue and Diamond Head Road. And currently, DTS has no immediate plans on installing traffic cameras along Diamond Head Road. If there is observed traffic congestion, call DTS. And then there was a request to say, what are the cameras that are on Kapahulu Avenue? And there are five cameras on Kapahulu Avenue, one at Kapahulu Avenue and Kapahulu Avenue, I guess they cross, and then Kuhiu Avenue and Kapahulu Avenue, Alaui Boulevard at Kapahulu Avenue, Kapahulu Avenue/Date Street, and Kapahulu Avenue/Olu Street. So five of them there. There's a question about the city plans to install an always stop at the Paki neighborhood. What is the status of the project? I think that DTS informed the board that the always stop at the intersection of Diamond Head Road and Makale Place is scheduled to be installed at the end of this month. So it's in process. And then there is a question about installing pedestrian flashing beacons in the neighborhood, and then the question was, what's the cost of a pedestrian flashing beacon versus a race crosswalk? So the average cost to install a RFB, as it's called, for that pedestrian is $400,000, and dependence on the location, the number of traffic lanes, and the ADA improvements are required. The concrete race crosswalk costs $100,000 to $300,000, depending on how wide the roadway is, and an asphalt race crosswalk costs about $25,000 to $50,000, depending on how wide the road is. And there was a question about adding reflective features to the traffic island on Kapahulu Avenue by Leonard's Bakery, because vehicles are still hitting the traffic island. When will DTS add reflective barriers to the traffic island? DTS is exploring to increase the conspicuacy of the traffic island on Kapahulu Avenue near Leonard's Bakery. Such raised pavement markets in yellow traffic paint is still their solution of choice at this time. And then there was questions about any changes to Route 200, and which operates through Kaimakii and Kapahulu, and what are the ridership numbers for Route 200? The Route 200 averaged 1,389 daily, weekend boardings in September, 2,000 daily and weekend day boardings, and is one of the most productive circular routes in the bus system. As such, DTS does not plan to modify Route 200 at this time. Feral cats. There was concerns raising about feeding feral cats by the City Mill on Wai'li Avenue. What can the city do to address feral cats and concerns in this area? On public property or with permission by the landowner, Hawaiian Humane Society can work to control feral cats. Interested customers should contact the Hawaii Humane Society directly or show them info from our piece where we have the website, where it's honolulu.gov/CS, which is Customer Service Division that runs that program, Free Roaming Cat Management. And then we have a outsourced firm, Sandwich Island Firm, that helps manage some of that stuff. Park resident raised, resident raised concerns about illegal activities at Makale Beach Park, including people exchanging money, driving parking mopeds. Can HPD monitor and increase law enforcement efforts at the beach park? And there are concerns about people urinating, defecating at the beach park because there's no public restrooms. Does the city plan to build restrooms at this park? Honolulu officers consistently enforce park rules and parking and trespassing laws. On October 23rd, park officers issued four citations for mopeds parked at the beach park. No other violations or illegal activities were observed. Officers will continue to monitor the area for violations. The city has no plans at this time to build restrooms or install portable toilets at the beach park. The size of the park does not allow for the space needed for this type of infrastructure. The board members asked if the city would consider the board's request, and I think there was a resolution that we passed, that a fenced dog park at the Alaui Golf Course. There are no plans, this is really under the Department of Enterprise Services, there's no plans to do that ballpark, dog park, and I would tell you, you've probably seen fences go up now around it, and the plan is to build a sod farm for the golf carts, is how DTS, how they want to use that land. So that's the plan there. Can E&amp;V put trash bins by the recycling and pumping station on Kapahulu Avenue? E&amp;V is unable to place city trash bins by the private recycling center and the border water supply Diamond Head Booster on Kapahulu Avenue. E&amp;V's refuse service is only provided to single-family residential properties via the three-card system. And then there was a question about the ICE and the federal law enforcement, and what is HPD's policy on cooperating with federal law? So I personally contacted the mayor's office. We're, to everyone's knowledge in that office, we're not participating in any ICE enforcement activities, and there's no comment on the overall assessment of the relationship of the federal government here from, in terms of our interaction with them in the community. I also want to say that there were issues about the fence and the chickens, and I think a private citizen must have fixed that, because I have a picture here of that fence being put up. So it's been repaired. So it'll be interesting thing to, I'll give you this picture, it'd be interesting to see...
Correction, Director Kruckey, correction, after what you've reported...
Your point of order.
I have, I have a response to that direct comment. Thank you.
Anton, finish his report.
I agree, but I just wanted to point out that there is a strong correction to the comment on the chicken fence.
Okay, well, let's, Anton finish.
Thank you. I will submit this picture for your review, that we did look into it, and that will conclude my report, Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions of the people in here present? Yes, Samo.
Is it possible for DTS, because of the incident we had on Kapahulu and Campbell Avenue, where they shut down that whole intersection, and some of Campbell Avenue and the number two couldn't turn down its normal route, so it had to be rerouted? I was taking a walk, and I was waiting on a bus stop at Campbell Avenue with someone else for over an hour, and we didn't know that it was rerouted. Is there any way that someone from DTS, like one of the supervisors, I guess, that drives around, can just quickly put up signs or something on the bus stops that are affected, that don't have phone access or anything like that?
I'll check with them.
Yeah, thanks. No, 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 it was the barricade situation happened, right?
The what?
The barricade situation that happened about three weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Linda?
Thank you for getting the information about Kuitake Cliffs. So are the showers working now? Because the watering, they put in a new watering...
Apparently so. But that just, you know, that's like an answer to the situation, that's not what we're going to do. So I got that information from DPR, and then I'll follow up and say, okay, now that we know this, what do we want to do?
That's what I want to talk about, is communication, because it seems to be, I mean, I'll be happy to be intermediary. I know the people that are running, they get all the grants and all the people there, the big things they do. They had a commercial from Bank of Hawaii, what they did was, they planted a number of trees, one each for everybody that died on 9/11 in commemoration of 9/11. And to have that watering system yanked out, and then somebody took it away with them with no communication, you know, the people are good there, they're trying to make everything better, and they made that place really, really nice.
Yeah, the cleanup effort was...
You can see the ocean, I mean, everybody likes that. So if we could just somehow work out some kind of communication between them and Department of Parks, so these kind of things wouldn't happen, I'd be happy to participate in that in any way I can help. And maybe the Parks Committee or something, because people are trying to do a good thing, and with no communication, it just doesn't work out.
Well, they are doing a good thing. Looks really nice, and you guys cleaned it up, and we gave that thing. I actually forwarded your voicemail to the head of Parks.
Good.
Yeah, and so the deputy director's looking at that. So my next follow-up with her, because that voicemail just came in over the, you know, a few days ago, will be to say, okay, now that we know this, what are we going to do about it?
Thank you, and I'd like to be included in that.
Yeah.
I've known Laura for a long time.
Yeah, she's out of town for the month, though, so Kay House looking into it.
Since she was, yeah. So that's what I'd like to do, and if we can do that, I think it'll be a win-win situation, and we just don't have the communication. The good that's come out of that is really, they have big grants, and they do big things, you know, they keep Diamond Head on both sides clean, so no more fires. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle? Are you ready?
Actually, yes, I have now, I had three points, now I have four as of Linda's comments. I'll try to make it very brief, understanding the constraints of this agenda. First of all, Director Kruckey, you have, as always, provided an incredibly responsive report, and we really want to thank you for your diligence and your detail. First of all, regarding Wyndham Avenue, there has been a very constrained, dangerous traffic problem at the intersection of Ma'ohao Avenue, where residents park their vehicles in the traffic lane approaching the stop sign. This has to be widened, whether it's eminent domain of taking an easement out of one of the properties to make the traffic flow free and complete, or whatever DTS might come up with. They investigated this a few years ago when we had a different chair, George was our chair, and he was concerned about this, and they did nothing. We still have these dangerous conditions where we have to skirt around vehicles that are parked in the traffic lane to get to the stop sign, which is one vehicle space beyond, and then there is traffic turning into Wyndham Avenue at the same time, or coming up Wyndham Avenue from Kapahulu, turning into Wyndham Avenue. It's myriad accidents waiting to happen, so please, please get DTS to research and remedy this. Secondly, you mentioned there are, for Makale Beach Park, there are no plans to build restrooms and no room for this infrastructure. Well, that's quite true. Makale Beach Park is very small, it's for local residents, it's for pedestrians, tourists on foot, there's no parking, and yet the mopeds have taken over, and the space where restrooms could be is overrun by mopeds. But that's not to say that restrooms are appropriate there, except... But that's not to say that restrooms are appropriate there, except perhaps Leahi Beach Park, would it, would be an alternative restrooms, because it's larger. Number three, the, I'm sorry, the, the fence and, oh, yes, the chicken fence, the chicken highway fence, from Kapialani Park, where the chickens and roosters habitate at the nursery and tennis court areas, and then they access the entire neighborhood during the day through a residential driveway. And we've been through this, we've communicated about this, I can certainly discuss this offline with you. However, it was not a resident who corrected this. There was a barricade placed of, a segment of chain link fencing to block the rooster highway, but the actual fence, I think I emailed to you, is basically going to fall down because the foundation to the fence posts are so weak that the resident of which I sent you a photograph was holding the place where the fence is about to fall down. It's only a four and a half foot high fence, and that's under standard height. And this is an old city fence that was built along the sewer easement. So the city needs to correct this. The urban forestry division decided they would not correct it because it was not part of their property, but it's, it is still a city infrastructure problem. So we could talk about this offline.
Right, Michelle, I'll send you a copy of the photo that was sent to me where the fence was repaired.
Oh, that would be, that would be very progressive. Thank you.
I'd like to mention, you know, chickens do fly. I've seen, so you put up a fence, and I've seen that all over the place here on this island around Diamond Head.
Well, especially if there's hens on one side of the fence and roosters on the other side of the fence, they'll.
I think the fence is going to stop at this too much.
Let's see.
Well, the issue is the roosters in the neighborhood that prevent people from continuing a healthily existence, with their crowing at four o'clock in the morning and then all day long. I mean, a lot of people work, so they don't hear it, but at four o'clock in the morning, they certainly do. And they stop at six o'clock when they return to the park. And this is an area that has a specific problem, and it's not just a single residential parcel, it's, it's a whole neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, chickens are all over all our islands.
Especially at the fire station, and they don't control that either.
Okay, let's go on. Laura, your hand's up. Laura Ruby?
Yeah. Yes, I thought this would be the appropriate place to ask you, Anton, and, and I hope Mike Formbray's also listening. This has to do very, two very quick things. I sent an email to many people, I think you were probably receiving one, and that is that the very inadequate MOA informational signage from the DTS for the bridge over the Olowai Canal is not adequate, the .91 acres is extremely, under-reported, a lot, large acreage, including what we call the land, the ocean, and the, or the water and the sky, which is the view planes, have not, are completely under-reported, and all of that is parkland that is being taken away from the park. So what we just were talking about at Kapialani Park has to do with taking away park area at Olowai Park, and that has to do with huge acreages and bisecting the park in two and removing way over a dozen trees. I think that's a very concern. We need to find what is called the replacement park in the neighborhood, and we don't have any reports of that at all. And then I would just say, this is maybe not in that area, but right in a close by area, and thing is, and is in, in the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board District, that is Kui Lake Place on Kapialani, and that has absolutely no plans, as far as I can tell, for any kind of park comparable green space either. So we need to know that every time anything is built, there is the comparable park space in the neighborhoods, and that they are fully, you know, maintained and funded with green items. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
So two very important places, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the need for green spaces is always, is always there. We have a climate crisis going on. I, I do have a question for you, Anton, about the Leahi Park. It's, Leahi Park is a beach park, it's a little park that's next to Makale Park, and that's had, that's continuing to collapse at a rapid rate, and the seawall is probably going to collapse soon, but it looks like if you go all the way from the beach to a pipe that's across, that's across the road, Diamond Head Road, it looks like that whole area is collapsing. Now, I don't know if there's a, I haven't climbed down to look at, see, but underneath the road to see if there's a pipe there keeping it up, but I would like someone to look at that from the city.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I add to that?
Yes, Linda.
It's like a Barefoot Cafe on Diamond Head Road, or Kalakaua. Laura filled in that whole area, and that's what's happening over there, too. The hole underneath, because Arlene sees it from the ocean, she's out in the water, so she can see what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, there's several places down, up and down our coastline that are getting, they're getting hollowed out, like the North Shore.
I'll, I'll, when I got Brian with me on the one inspector, I'll just try to go right up the road and inspect the others.
Yeah, it's, it's, it needs some kind of, we need to do something about it.
Take a look at it.
Any, any other questions online? I don't see anybody.
Hi, Chair. Hi, Chair.
Yes, I see. Hi, Daisy.
Yeah. Hi, thank you, Director. Regarding the Route 200 bus system, it's not the number of passengers. I see you're going to get a lot more if the bus route has changed, not going up the roadway past Kamiki High School to the Traffic Island on Six, but rather if they make a right turn of Kapahulu Avenue, like the thirteen and fourteen, they'll get a lot more passengers and a lot more safety. It's basically, when it goes up to where the Traffic Island is, that's where a lot of accidents, potential accidents will happen, and it's a safety issue. That's the main crux of why the 200 should be changed, and if DTS cannot see that, something is wrong. Regarding the Route W, the, which replaces Route 20 to go to the airport, if they could, DTS or the, the bus OTS can also put down where the new bus route location stops are, because the W does not stay with the other express buses do. They have their own pole that they have stopped, that they have to be at. So it would help if they could also put that on the signs that they have to alert people that Route 20 does not exist anymore, but it would help if they put where on Koheu Avenue the buses stop, so that people can get there. And also, somebody tried the rail system to go to the airport on that free weekend. There's notice that if you want to go to the airport with your luggage, you have to have something, I guess like a porter or somebody else help you with the luggage, because it's not convenient to go to the airport. So that needs to really, really be fine-tuned, because I think it defeats the purpose of people going to the airport where they can get off and go straight to their boarding area. So that area, I think, has to be redone or something, but somebody mentioned there's another route that's even better and closer to the actual airport, so I think it really needs to be fine-tuned. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Daisy. Oh, Margaret?
Hi there. I know that, I'm not sure that they have changed, they still have that left turn off Monseret onto Leahi, and it's a left turn only, and it's really screwing up the traffic, and people are still complaining, and is there any movement on that?
I, I thought they addressed that.
You were.
Didn't they, didn't they address that? I thought they did.
I don't think so.
Are you talking about?
I don't think so, I think it's still there.
The left turn on, onto Leahi, or the left turn onto Paki?
The left turn onto, the, a left turn only onto Leahi. And also, too, what Daisy brought up, it says something I think I saw in the paper, and what happens is if people are going to the airport, it's expedient for them to go past the airport to the next station, and then take a train back. It gets you closer to the airport. The train stopping at the airport station is too far from the terminal, and so if you take, get off at the, I guess it's Lagoon, maybe, I don't know what the name of, the Hawaiian name is of the station, but if you get off there and take a train back, it takes you closer to the terminal, which is kind of weird.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that's correct.
Well, maybe you should check it out. Maybe I should check it out.
Yeah, yeah, please check.
But I did read it.
Go, go check it out.
Yeah, it was just, it's too far to walk from the, you know, from the terminal station, and it's not, but if you go backwards from the, the one that's further, you know, Cocoa Head side of it, and come back, it works.
All right, thank you, Margaret. Anton, any, I think we're done with all the questions, but thank you very much for answering everything.
Yeah, thanks, Anton, for your great work. You deserve a medal.
Right, thank you. All right, now we go on to the City Council Chair, Tommy Waters. Adam is online.
Hi, Aloha Vice Chair Velasco. You're doing a wonderful job filling in for Chair Welch, so thank you, and thank you to the members of the board. I'm Adam Do from Chair Waters' office. Tasha Luth did email our newsletter earlier today. I do like, would like to thank Director Kruckey for his thorough report. Tommy, or Chair Waters, has a wonderful relationship, working with him. He's a great guy and really gets things done for, for our community. I do have a few updates on things that Chair Waters has been working on. The City Council unanimously approved Resil 25-284 on November 4th, which authorizes a new collective bargaining agreement that raises the Honolulu Police Department salaries by 27% through 2029. The contract provides 5% annual raises and a one-time retention bonus in 2026. The agreement aims to strengthen recruitment and retain, as HPD continues to face significant vacancies. Chair Waters did note that public safety is non-negotiable. We owe it to our officers and to the public to ensure that HPD has the resources and and respect it needs to keep Honolulu safe. The Climate Resiliency Fund, this is one that I'm excited about. The Climate Resiliency Fund is soliciting department project proposals for FY27 for inclusion in the mayor's FY27 operating budget that's transmitted to the City Council. The Climate Resiliency Fund is a data, dedicated special fund. You may remember voting on this, it was on the ballot in 2024, that voters voted on and approved as a charter amendment. It establishes to support initiatives and projects aimed at mitigating the impacts of climate change, enhancing the city's infrastructure and communities, and promoting sustainable practices. The fund is funded by one-half of 1% of real property tax revenues each fiscal year. In fiscal year 26, that was about $8.8 million. Our office is looking to team up with the department on a project for our district. There will be about eight to 10 projects that are funded, and we love one in our district. So if there are any members or constituents that has a great idea, please reach out to our office. I'd love to hear it and potentially work on it. Bill 2625 CD1, that relates to bed and breakfast and transient vacation unit standards and requirements. So Bill 62, it updates the rules for the bed and breakfast and short-term rentals, clearly defining where they can operate, near resorts in Waikiki, Kualina, and Turtle Bay. It also outlines the requirements for owners to register, renew, and adhere to safety and neighborhood standards, ensuring short-term rentals remain safe and compliant. And then lastly, I just wanted to add that Chair Waters did put, I believe, at least $100,000 for irrigation for Kui Lake Cliffs. So we will be working with DPR and Keone to make sure that, you know, the shower maintains great pressure for the beach doors, and also importantly, for the irrigation improvements for the wonderful work that they're doing over there. With that, I'm happy to take back any questions to Chair Waters.
Any questions? And, yes, Linda?
Thank you for explaining about the Kui Lake Cliffs and the water situation. At least now we'll know where to go as an intermediary. So I'm glad to hear that that money is going to remedy, hopefully, the problem there. I, I, for one, don't really understand what's going on at the City Council, and I don't think anybody's really come to explain it to us. Are there new people that have been added to the City Council? I mean, there's a different procedure going on now, and I, independent of being at this meeting, nobody's ever really explained it to us. So could you please address that?
Any new City Council members? So you do have Councilmember Scott Nishimoto, who represents part of the Diamond Head Kapahulu, Kapahulu St. Louis Heights. He represents St. Louis Heights, as well as Polo Valley, and I believe portions of Waikiki. So he was, came over from the state legislature and was voted in in the last election, I believe Kylie may be on. Yeah, they're a great office. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah. Are there more people in the City Council now? There seemed like there was a push for a counterpart of local people to complement the City Council members.
Oh, I see. I believe you might be talking about our, our leadership changes?
Yes, there's a big, I know Scott really well, and.
Yeah.
I know he brought something from being on the state level. So there is a whole, there's a type of reorganization, is what I could call it. And so could you explain that? Because nobody's ever came and told us something changed, or schooled us about this, or I just see extra people at the City Council.
Yeah, so there's still nine, nine members of the City Council. Each district has about 100,000 constituents. For example, Chair Waters, District Four, runs from the Makapu Lighthouse to Waikiki. Currently, so reorg captains, you know, all, all, all the time. Currently, we have a more experienced leadership, so Chair Waters is the chair. experienced, um, leadership. So Chair Waters is the chair. Uh, Vice Chair Andrea Popolo, Popola and, um, floor leader Esther Kia Aina. Um, they're all very experienced legislators, um, that, uh, you know, just we feel that is the best way to, to get things done. But every, every, uh, council member still has their equal vote, um, and, uh, yeah. If that doesn't answer your question, um, please give me a call, Linda. Um, I believe you have my number, but 768.
Can you have Scott call me, Nishimoto?
Yeah, seriously.
I think his representative might be here too. Yeah, that's the next one. Scott's representative is here.
Well, actually Scott, he was instrumental in coming from the senate and making a change in.
Yeah, well, you'll, you'll be able to ask questions of him or his office directly.
Yeah, I believe I see Kylie online and, um, I'm sure she'll, uh, send, send the message to, um, member Nishimoto to give you a call. Thank you.
Um, any questions? Um, any additional questions here? I have a quick question. Um, um, you were talking about the climate resilience funds.
Yeah.
And you're asking for inputs. Uh, what kind of projects are you envisioning to give the public an idea of what they can reasonably expect?
Um, I mean, anything that you would like to, um, possibly, um, address, whether that's, um, uh, e- erosion control to, you know, the Diamond Head cliff sides to possibly rain gardens or additional community gardens, um, to making our infrastructure a little bit more resilient, um, anything along those lines. Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, how about something, maybe this isn't appropriate, but I, we know that there are, there is a large, um, two large cesspools uh, adjacent to Makale Beach Park with, um, looking into yeah, you know, possibly trying to address those two situations, be part of this, could it be?
Yeah, most certainly. That, that's, that's a great one. Thank you, Ireland.
All right. Thank you. Uh, okay, anybody online have a question? Michelle?
Thank you, Acting Chair of Velasco. Um, I'd like to address Adam and thank him for his great, um, report on the new stop signs along Diamond Head Road at Makale Place. So desperately needed and I know that Adam and Kelly Akazaki from DTS toured that area with us to, to survey that situation and now we have a positive result. However, the raised crosswalks and we've heard about concrete versus asphalt at this meeting. Asphalt, far less expensive, would work. Um, they're going to come after school raised crosswalks, which will take about seven years. That is not going to help our community at this time. So let's see what Chair Waters can do about speeding that up. Um, also, I'm concerned about a report I received about Chair Waters reporting to the Waikiki Neighborhood Board that he's in full support of the Alawai, the proposed Alawai so-called pedestrian bridge, which has, uh, actually 20-foot wide traffic lanes. And they're claiming it's only for pedestrians and bicycles, yet it will go straight to a new proposed elevated rail segment along Kialani TUH, where all these high rises are now being proposed and built, taking away from low-income housing. This is a huge concern and I'd like to know straightforward at our next meeting why Councilmember Waters is, is supporting such a devastating, uh, development in our area. Um, and I think that's about it for Councilmember Waters. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Um, thank you for joining us. That was at least maybe two years ago, um, when we walked, uh, Diamond Head Road with Kelly and DTS and all of the neighbors there. So it's really nice to see, um, that this project finally, um, seeing, seeing the fruits of, fruits of that. Uh, regarding Alapono Bridge, you know, Chair Waters does also represent Waikiki. Um, and I think it is important, um, uh, we did see, for example, thing, our tsunami warning, our, our most recent one, that getting out of Waikiki was, um, very difficult. You know, we, we had many constituents who were stuck on, um, the Alawai Boulevard for several hours. And luckily, we had, um, lots of time, um, and preparation to, uh, get out of there. But the bridge would just be one other avenue where, um, residents and tourists and also workers, um, to safely get out of, um, Waikiki. But, um, I don't want to speak for Chair Waters, so thank you for, for your comments. I will, um, share that.
Just as a clarification, uh, regarding floods and tsunamis, it's recommended that people in Waikiki go up to the third and fourth floor of buildings, not across uh, street-level flooding zones and the Alawai Canal into another flooding zone in Makali Moiliili. That just doesn't make sense. And maybe Laura Ruby could expand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, I would like to add, uh, just for my, for everyone's knowledge. Um, Diamond Head is within walking distance of Waikiki. You know, if there was a real emergency, I think people should be encouraged to just walk up to KCC. That's a nice safe spot for, to wait out a tsunami. If they want to get out and you can just, that's an easy walk.
If they can cross the roads in a flood zone.
Well, it, it would just strictly for a tsunami. Tsunami, usually you have hours to, to get to safety. Not, not, I wouldn't recommend it for a hurricane, but for a tsunami, yes. Okay, now we have, uh, Laura.
Okay, well, I would just like to add to that also. It is clearly recommended that people evacuate to the fourth floor and above, not to go anywhere else. You know what the, uh, uh, UH students did when there was a false alarm? They were like chickens without heads. I watched all of the people when there was trying, they were trying to get out of, um, uh, the Alawai Boulevard with the other last one there and it was ridiculous with the car jammed, uh, jammed up. All they need to do is stay in place and go above the fourth floor. Uh, coming over to Moiliili, uh, Makali is two or three feet below the level of Waikiki.
Chair.
It's, it would be a huge, uh,
Yes.
Uh, swamp.
All right.
That you were trying to walk a mile in to get to anything up at Puck's Island. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna move on.
That's fine. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Vice Chair, this is Daisy. I just wanted to add, um, I was at that Waikiki meeting and Chair Waters said that would be the preferred way, even though emergency management said to go up fourth floor and above. Now, I can imagine what happened with the seven hours of preparation for the last disaster.
Okay.
People couldn't go anywhere. So that's what's going to happen. People will panic on the bridge and guess what? The water comes to them and they'll all perish. Thank you.
Yeah, I, uh, yes, I think this needs to become another, um, discussion with city officials as to, and I think they are working on, uh, emergency response, a better emergency response to our disasters. And, um, anybody else have a question for Adam? Okay, then we're gonna move on now to Councilmember Scott Nishimoto. And we have his rep here.
Hello. Hi, Vice Chair. Hi, everyone. Um, Kylie here from Councilmember Nishimoto's office. Um, just wanted to, um, let you folks know, we just had our St. Louis Heights, uh, Community Association meeting earlier this week. So, um, we were able to touch base with some of our St. Louis Heights community recently, but, um, if there's anyone who has questions or concerns tonight for St. Louis Heights, please feel free to, um, reach out to us. Um, I can take it back to Councilmember and as always, I'll leave our contact info in the chat. Um, just wanted to say thank you to Adam from Chair Waters' office for, um, tackling that question earlier. Um, thank you, Member Wong, for your question. Um, I'm just kind of gonna echo what Adam said there and just say that, you know, the reorganization reorganization in June, um, like any reorganization, ultimately, um, best supports the council's work going forward and, you know, regardless of any internal changes, um, Councilmember Nishimoto has continued to work collaboratively, um, really well with all of his colleagues and, you know, he's staying focused on community priorities. Um, and yeah, I'll leave that open for any questions or if anyone would like to contact us, I'll leave all the info in the chat. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, uh, I, there is a whole reorganization of the city council, yet we're not talking about it. Nobody seems to know about it. And it's not, call you up on the phone is not, I think we should talk about it in public and explain it, what's going on, rather than just, you know, uh, I'll talk to you later on the phone.
I didn't get a notice of the St. Louis meeting until that afternoon. How are you contacting people about it? Is it you or is it the St. Louis? I tried to go on their Zoom once and couldn't find it.
Yeah, um, I think it's a, so it's a, the board sends out the, the Zoom link. Um, I don't know if Angie's here, but, um, yeah, the, the board sends out the Zoom prior.
That afternoon that, hey, the meeting's at seven tonight or something.
Yeah, no, we're in the, we're in the same, we're in the same boat. Yeah, so we, um, it doesn't come from our office. It actually comes from their community association meeting, so.
Well, they're not doing a very good job on communicating the meetings. I did get, like, when they were having a Zoom meeting, they had a poster board, you know, at the bottom of the hill, but there was nothing on there as far as contact information. So we need to, Angie, maybe Angie has some information on that.
All right. Okay, anybody else have any questions online?
Chair or Vice Chair Velasco, can I answer as an Angie?
Yes, Angie, go ahead.
Yeah, um, it does come from the board. I can put the board's email address into the chat if you would like to just plug them again to get on it. I will say the emails are not the most consistent. Um, so depending on the month, we are all in the same boat, but that is the email to Pester, but I'll put it in the chat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was disappointing.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I am.
Oh, Raf, oh, Raf, Rafia.
Hi, Chair. Uh, so Angie or Kylie, I know, uh, still I'm not getting any information or meeting agenda from you guys. So are you deleting my, uh, Kylie, my email from the listing St. Louis High Association, but I'm not receiving anything anymore?
Oh, sorry. Rafia, is this for our personal District 5 E-Blast or, because we're, we're not affiliated with the, with the St. Louis Heights Board, so that's a separate, you'd have to email the board separately.
Oh, my hair, maybe. Okay, I know now.
Yeah, my hair, yeah, so that would be a separate, um, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I think Angie, thanks, Angie.
Or Angie, I'll talk to Angie later to include me again. Thank you. Thank you, Acting Chair. Thank you, Kylie.
Okay, any, anybody else have a question? Online? I don't see any hands. I think that's it. Thank you so much, Kelly. And then let, uh, we're on to our federal and state official reports. Um, I, is any representative from Ed Casey's office here? Any from Brian Schatz? Any from AZ? Uh, any, the representative, uh, let's see, Governor Josh Green?
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Brian. Evening.
Hi, I am posting the, uh, November issue of, uh, the Governor's Newsletter in the chat. Um, and there are a couple of stories, um, just about like SNAP benefits and things that were kind of related to the government shutdown, um, with links and stuff for, um, assistance, um, for people. There was a, another story about, um, kind of a milestone in early uh, childhood education, um, with the 100th, um, preschool um, opening and that, that one was, uh, in the community, the Kaileua community on Iste Wahoo. Um, and there's several other stories there, but, um, I'm just here to, you know, answer any questions, take, uh, any questions you may have back to the Governor Communications Office. Um, so, you know, please let me know if I can uh, assist in any way.
Um, any questions in here, present? Um, I, I do have a question, Ryan, regarding the, um, healthcare subsidies that are gonna, um, that are reportedly gonna skyrocket. And I'm wondering, I know that I was hearing that the state has a huge uh, amount of people that are covered by, I think it's Quest. And, um, I'm wondering what, if there's any, I'm sure you're working on plans, but what are those plans to help that our state deal with this health issue? Ryan?
Got it. I will take that back to the team. Thank you.
Okay, anybody online?
I have a question. Hi, this is Angie. I had a question regarding SNAP. Um, because I know earlier this week, the $250 was released, I believe it was. Um, so thank you for that. In light of the recent passing on the federal level for the budget, is it now, I just want to know if the 250 is going to be taken? If it's now just additional to the normal month or if it's going to be affecting the balance overall in general?
Gotcha.
Because I know there was also a few states that the SNAPs reloaded automatically on the first and then the federal government was looking at trying to have state rescind it. And then we had the additional 250 and then now there's the federal releasing the funds once the government reopens. So I'm just curious how Bezdie's gonna work that one out.
I know the Department of, uh, Human Services, um, has like the most kind of up-to-date
Yeah.
source for that information. I don't know if they have that on their website or not, um, if they can answer that question for you or not, but I, I have a, a link I can just throw into the, um, chat as well for that. I'm not, but again, I'm not, I can take it back to the team as well, but if, if this might be an expedient way to to get that info to you, hopefully this may, um.
No, appreciate it. I know Scott Marshig is probably all over right now.
Right.
So, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I'm a jump-in chair. Um, hi Angie, this is, uh, Jackson Sayama. My understanding is that the 250 is on top of whatever benefits that, uh, will be released. So, um, it, it's guaranteed.
Yeah, I, somehow I don't see you on our agenda.
I'm not on the, on the agenda? Oh, okay.
Oh, he is. We're, we're, oh, I, okay, here, there you are. I was going too fast. Um, I have another question for Ryan, for the governor. Uh, it, I know that ICE has detainees at the facility by the airport. And I was wondering if the governor has toured that facility and are we ensuring that people held at that facility? And are we ensuring that people held at that facility have legal counsel and are given due process? And are being held humanely?
Got it. I can, I can take that back to the Governor's team.
Yes, is there a way to get an answer before a month goes by? This is a very pressing issue.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I can.
Right, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions for the Governor's op, for Ryan? I think that's it. Now, now we're on to.
Excuse me, Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
Okay.
This is Daisy, sorry. Quick question. I had a question for the governor. With the new speed camera going in effect, what speed limit above the, how much, how many miles above the speed limit for issue a speeding ticket from the state? Is it 11 miles or is it over 11 miles? Because some people have been getting notification that if you go 11 miles, you are being cited. But then, I'm not sure, what is the correct term? Is it over 11 miles or at 11 miles? Because it makes a big difference. Otherwise, the state would be collecting a lot of fines. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Daisy. I can, I can ask DOT to clarify, to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else online? See anything? Okay, I think, all right, thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Now we're on to State Senator Stanley Chang. There any rep?
Aloha, hi.
Oh, hi.
My name's Casey. I'm from Senator Stanley Chang's office. I will drop his newsletter in the chat. And just a few events from that newsletter. The Hawaii Food Bank is happy to receive donations at their Oahu warehouse. That's located at 2611 Keely Howe Street in Honolulu. They're open from Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. You can also, upcoming is the Waikiki and Hawaii Kai Holiday Parades. The Waikiki Parade will be taking place on November 28, 2025 at 6:30 PM. The Hawaii Kai is going to be held on November 29 from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So please check that out. And then finally, the Hawaii Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, DCCA, you're now, Hawaii residents are now able to claim unclaimed life insurance benefits. And if you want more information, you can call their insurance division at 808-586-2790. And I'm here to, you know, take back any questions you have, might have for the Senator.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask any questions for the Senator in-house? Nope. Okay, online?
I have a question.
Okay, you got lucky then. Okay, take care.
Oh, Linda has a question.
Oh. It's me again. Ah, yeah. Can you have Senator Nishimoto give me a call or you can call me?
Senator, you mean Senator Chang?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. All right, sorry.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
All right. Okay, anybody online? Nope. Okay, now we have, I don't, is Lesihara Senator? Okay. Okay, no Senator Ukanaga. How about Representative Tina Nakata? She's, she's not here. Okay, then we have Jackson, Jackson Sayama.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, board members and members of the public. First, I just want to start with some updates on SNAP. As you already know, the federal government has reopened. And with that compromised budget that will last to January of next year, there is a year's worth of funding for SNAP benefits, so that should be fully reopened at this point. As I mentioned earlier, the 250 that was provided through the state food relief program will continue on as is, as well as the rent and utility relief program that still needs to be applied to. However, despite the continuation of the SNAP benefits, you know, I recognize that there are still families in the district that are struggling. So there is a website in which you could find local resources. So that's www/findhelp.org. Just type in your zip code and you could find all sorts of resources and assistance programs, ranging from housing, food, transportation. It's, I really do encourage you to share that with your friends and family, if you know anyone who might benefit from that. Next, I do want to go over some events that happened last week. The Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii nonprofit organized a large-scale cleanup. This is an annual event along Polo Stream as well as Wai'a Avenue. I myself participated in the stream cleanup. I was based primarily near Hokulani. So we had, I don't know how many dozens of volunteers that came out to pick trash. So really, I encourage you, if you weren't able to participate this year, to participate next year. Really, you know, hundreds of pounds of trash that were picked up. So that all, of course, impacts the ecosystem, but it ultimately affects our health because all this trash goes into the ocean that we swim in. Next, we have a future events for Thanksgiving, November 23, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Kamaki Community Park. Myself, Councilmember Nishimoto, and a community member from Polo, Randy Reyes, have been working on this event. It's a free event for the community to enjoy. There will be live music, so it's kind of a, what I understand is a picnic style. So feel free to bring your own chair, picnic blankets, food, and you could enjoy some wonderful music and some festivities around Thanksgiving holidays. Also to note is the Kamaki Christmas Parade. This year it will be held December 4, Thursday. Right, get traffic, plenty of traffic during that event. So just make sure that you have that on your schedule so you could make sure that you're not stuck in that. That prep work, prep, the preparation for that event should probably start around 4:00, 4:30. So just a heads up there. And finally, the legislative session is coming up. So my office is starting to gear up for that, working on legislation. So if you do have any ideas for the community, I encourage you to reach out to my office and we'd be happy to work with you. Oh, and finally, I think a board member or someone else mentioned previously regarding, had a question about the speeding cameras. My understanding is that the citation is triggered when a vehicle is traveling 11 or more miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So I hope that clarifies that particular question. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for people here? I see none. How about online? Any hands? We don't see any. Well, thank you very much for all the information. So November 23, what, do you have a time for that event?
Yes, 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the Kamaki District Park.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we, now we are on Andrew Garrett. Any rep there? No, you see him? Okay, no, nobody. How about Rep Olds?
Hi, Aloha, Vice Chair, members of the board. So it's coming in last, just going to fill in with some information. So there has been a lot of changes in the last month since our last board meeting. A lot of things happening on the federal level that have been impacting the local level. So while SNAP has been funded and that allocation the state gave out is not going to be taken back, hopefully it gives some families some support during this time. Do you want to remind everybody that the Hawaii Relief Program is still available? It was very important for those families, especially the federal workers who were not receiving a paycheck, to help pay for rent and/or their mortgage and also for utilities. So it's still available. We use tenant funds, sorry, we would use our tenant funds to help support that. As Chair Sayama was mentioning, session's coming up and we are looking for workers for the session. I put a link in the chats for those who might be interested. So we're looking for various positions from January through May. If you have some passion or you want to see a little bit behind the curtain and how the process works, we definitely recommend that you apply. The Mo'eeleli Christmas Parade will be held December 11th. It's a Thursday. It will kick off at 11:30 from Ku'ewa Elementary. It will travel westbound down King Street, past University. It will go up Beritania, so at that, that Long Fork where King and Beritania split, it will go up Beritania and then make a left on Istenberg and ends at Old Stadium Park. So from 6:30 to 7:30 PM on the 11th, just be prepared for some traffic if you are in that area because the road will be closed for that parade. And it's predominantly a children's parade. So Mother Rose Preschool, Kailua Elementary School are going to have a lot of students participating in the walk. And for anybody who's potentially looking at participating with us or joining on the sidewalks, parking can be a little bit tight. So I actually recommend parking by Old Stadium Park, moving eastbound. Put up your chairs, wave at the kids, and then that way it's easier for you to get out. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions here in-house? No, I don't see any. How about online? Any questions? Michelle?
Thank you. I would just like to conclude by commending Representative Olds for his diligence and detailed reports that are so community-oriented. And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd really like to recommend him to run for our Senate District. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. I agree, he's done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't see me changing colors right now, but I think I'm pretty red. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I have a question. I know a few people who are federal workers who have used their credit cards to bridge the gap from no paychecks. And were they, can, is there any way they could get help with this relief funds or how does that work?
So from what I read today, because things have been moving very quickly since the, the, basically the bills to pass to reopen, the government has been moving through the Senate, through the House. And I believe President Trump just signed it today. Federal workers should be getting their paycheck starting Saturday. The thing about using the tenant funds is there are specific requirements that are, just tenant is a, it's federally funded. So it's temporary assistance for needy families, so there are income thresholds. But for individuals who are making zero income, up to whatever a partner might be making within that household, it really depends on what they were making. So for example, there were some families that I know that there, there was no income coming in during that time. So they would automatically qualify because right now they're making zero income from, you know, these circumstances. While they, they could be making a lot more money when they're actually in paychecks, right now they're making zero. This was supposed to be helped designed to bridge that gap, to try to help some of these workers who are not getting paid. It's still working sadly. So they technically would still qualify up until they get paid. So if they put in their application today, tomorrow, in theory, depending how fast the processing works, they would, as they provide their pay stubs or lack of income, they technically would qualify up until that paycheck comes in on Saturday. But there are income limits. It does follow its scale based off of how many household members. But there's a lot more information available online that I can send it to the board. It might be a little bit late to get that information out now for some of the families who are affected by the federal shutdown. But for families who are still in need in general, who may not necessarily have been impacted by the federal shutdown, it's still open. And in which case, please board members, share it to your committee members, family members, or people you think you might be able to benefit from it. It's a good, a good program.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, do we have, let's see, I think that's the end of our representatives. There's no more questions. So next is our Public and Community Concerns Open Forum. And the thought process originally was to, we switched the public community and concerns after the reps. Hopefully that community concerns could be answered by the representatives. So that's why it's, the agenda's slightly different than tonight. So, but we still have it as an open forum. So if there's anything that wasn't addressed, then you're welcome to come up. And state your name. Thank you.
My name is Stephen, my name is Stephen Pazienza. I'm with Naukahaiania Racing. And what we do is we promote racing events. We're working with Hawaii Pacific Health. We put on many races a year. Our next event is going to be the Hawaii Pacific Health Women's 10K, which is going to be January 25 of 2026. So I have a flyer here on the event that I'm going to leave with, with the board. Thank you, board, for allowing me to be here. The event is pretty much an all-women's event. We've been going, this is going to be the 48th year of the event. It started with Straub and now it's with Hawaii Pacific Health. The route, the race starts at 7:00 AM on Sunday morning, the 25th. It starts at Capulani Park. There's a 5K and a 10K. The 10K starts at 7:00. The 5K starts at 7:20. And the route goes from Capulani Park, right by the bathrooms, and it goes up Diamond Head to Triangle Park. Turns on, at Triangle Park down to Diamond Head or Montserrat to 22nd. It goes down to Ela Pio and then back to Halaav and then back all the way down to, to Capulani Park. The 5K just goes, the same start, and it goes up to Diamond Head Lookout and then turns around and goes back there. We work with the police. We have GP roadway that'll be doing all the roadwork, the signs and coning off everything. And we have special police duty on all the intersections. We've done that for many, many years. So just wanted to, part of our permit is to come and announce the event that we will be having it. So that's one of the reasons why I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just wanted to leave these. So I got a 10K route, 5K route, and a flyer on the event.
Um, yeah, I'll take them. Great, thank you very much. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll leave them. Any, we can all look at them. Anybody else have on, online that has any community concerns?
Any, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's continue. Okay, board business, board action item. Let's see. The resolution, I was looking at that. The resolution was reposted on the drive without the markup, so you could actually read it. And it's support of Rep Perusso's request. And I hope everyone's had a chance to look at it. Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. All right, so now it's up for discussion, correct? All right, so. All right, so um any questions on this? Any opinions on this? Um anybody on online want to try, say anything about this? But public testimony? Okay, um I would like to just say I I really appreciate Amy's office um putting this resolution out and I fully support it. So I guess can we have a, we should have a roll call on this one.
A quick thing, uh since then the Wong missed it. Could we just have a quick recap of it for her?
Yeah, so um it was a resolution put out a few, it was like two months ago that Amy's rep came here. Do you remember that? Her rep gave an explanation of of, you know, like preventing, yeah. Well, we're voting on it today, but she gave it to us a few months ago. Yeah. Okay. All right, um I think we're ready. Any, without anybody's additional comments or concerns, I guess we can vote, go for a vote.
We're voting on the resolution to request the legislature of the state of Hawaii to prioritize comprehensive pesticide reform. Allen.
Aye.
Hacina.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Mattson.
Aye.
Miranda.
Aye.
Merchi.
Aye.
Rosman.
Aye.
Saint Dennis. Absent. Velasco.
Aye.
Wasden.
Aye.
Witherwax. Witherwax. Bruce Wong.
Aye.
Linda Wong.
Aye.
And Chair Welch is absent. With eleven votes, this resolution has been adopted.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Um okay, so with that, we'll go on to
Uh uh Acting Chair Velasco, uh we had two documents posted on our uh Google Drive, our board drive from uh Pearl City Board twenty-one. There were two resolutions regarding the Neighborhood Commission Office and Neighborhood Commission as well as the e-bikes. Are these, uh I mean, we hadn't, we did not have these on the agenda. So are these for future discussion?
Uh Linda, I saw that too. I was looking at all the the documents it's uh this week.
This is Michelle.
It, I do not, I, Michelle, sorry. I think that, yes, it's not on the agenda, so.
So uh the Pearl City Neighborhood Board adopted those resolutions and wanted to distribute it to all boards. So it's not for uh discussion at tonight's meeting for the Diamond Head Kapahulu St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board, but it certainly can be in the future. Um so Pearl City's Neighborhood Board adopted those resolutions that are posted on your drive, just for your awareness. And uh for the record, I believe uh member Witherwax voted no on the resolution. So the resolution was adopted, eleven votes aye, one nay vote, and no abstentions.
I'm sorry, I'm confused here. Which resolution did he vote no on? We didn't have these two resolutions before the board.
Uh Ronan voted no on the um on the pesticide reform. Resolution. Correct.
Okay, well, I think we're on another topic here, but thank you for the correction. So could we have these two resolutions posted on the next agenda? Um I think they're, they're really important, but they need explanation from the Pearl City Board. So maybe they could present these two resolutions to us to evaluate and vote on as well in support.
Uh I agree, but maybe we, I mean, if we is, does the public have access to our drive? No, right. Oh, they do. Okay, I would recommend that everybody, that we all read those resolutions so that maybe um we can put them on the agenda for next time. And if everyone has read them and understands them, and we can always contact the boards, right, if we have a question?
Well, the issue is that the uh Neighborhood Commission Office Resolution, I mean, we know about a lot of problems there, but I don't see the problems they're expressing in the Neighborhood Com- Commission that oversees our neighborhood plan. Um and there have also been proposals for charter amendments regarding neighborhood boards versus community disparate boards versus Neighborhood Commission versus uh Neighborhood Commission Office. And we need some clarification from the originating Pearl City Neighborhood Board.
Yes.
So perhaps we could amend a resolution that we might support uh to convey to the Charter Commission.
Okay, all right. Let's, I think we need to move on from these resolutions. We'll they can be taken care of outside the meeting.
No, for the next agenda, please.
But they can be added to the next agenda.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is the um Winston has a note on the permitted um interaction group and of on property taxes.
Um right now, I'm still trying to put together the committee to discuss that, so I don't have any report right now.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, uh let's see. Committee reports, yeah. I have nothing more to report on the environment, uh parks and recreation.
Madam Acting Chair, I have a comment on on this uh committee, uh so-called uh permitted interaction committee group. There's a very explicit explanation here on the agenda that is just subservient. And after one report, that's the end of them. I I cannot agree with that. I think this is, property taxes are such an important issue. It should be made a committee of our our neighborhood board. Um not, not a, uh not a permitted action, interaction group or pig uh uh or committee that reports once and is disbanded.
I, I'm pretty sure that this is the the formal, but my understanding is the group can have many meetings before you give a report. So it's not just one. I mean, it could, this could last a long time. The whole point is that they give one report. Bruce?
I have a sign-up sheet here if anybody wants to be a part of that, so.
But we need updates on their progress, not, and updates are reports. So I see this as a restriction on the progress of this group.
Um perhaps Curtis, can you?
Yes, so so that that verbiage on the permitted interaction group came from O I P, the State's Office of Information Practices. So um I would recommend you to contact their office about pigs. Um and in regards to Bruce Wong's permitted interaction group on property taxes, um as as stated on the agenda, the pig will meet as many times with the members who uh volunteered to join the pig, uh Bruce Wong, Linda Wong, Lars Saint Dennis, Arlene Velasco, Margaret Merchi. They can talk amongst each other and as many uh other residents and elected officials without having any meeting agendas or minutes. So uh once they come up with a report, they'll propose the report. And if um there needs to, if there is a need or a a want from board members to create a committee, um that can certainly be on the table at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question.
Linda?
Thank you. Uh can you tell me how this got to O I P?
The ver, the verbiages from O I P's um guidance on who board members can talk to in permitted interactions.
You're just saying that's O I P's uh
Yes, that's their
feeling about any permitted.
That's their, no, 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 that's their, that's from their website, the O I P website on permitted interaction groups.
Okay, the committee reports um on the environment. Oh, I do wanna, well, not, it's not, I shoot, I should have written, done this sooner, but um just so the neighborhood, so the public knows and everyone knows, Surf Rider Blue Water Task Force has added two sites because of complaints of people getting sick and off of Makale Beach Park. And there was some incidents at Kaimana Beach. So we've been testing that, we started testing there in August. And we'll continue and and at least for another year and see if we can determine if we have a problem there with the water quality. Yes, Linda?
Where do we find these readings?
Um it, type in B W T F, that sounds for Blue Water Task Force, and Surf Rider, and it'll pop up. And then you'll get an interactive map and you click on our island. And you can, you can explode it and then you see all the test results. All right, and then um now we have
I think we need a true link because the um
I can add that easily.
Yeah, please, put it on the
I'll put it on the drive.
Thanks.
Because it is a very good resource. Um okay, then we go to Parks and Recreation. Anthony.
Uh no report.
Okay, Planning and Zoning, Michelle?
No report as yet, although I see a uh joint committee meeting uh that could be forthcoming, so uh we should look into that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I agree. Okay, Traffic and Transportation, Margaret?
No report, but I'm looking forward to having meetings. After having talked to Anton Croky, he thought that that the repairs that were the renovation or the changes were gonna be made and they're not. So we'll have to have more direct communication with D T S.
All right, thank you.
No report.
Okay, Public Safety and Disaster Preparedness, Angie?
No report at this time.
Okay. Uh but, okay, so now we have Saint, the uh subjects to reports.
Um the next, St. Louis Heights Community Association, I expect is January, uh Monday, January twelfth, seven P M. I don't know yet if it's Zoom or in person at at Hokalani School, so I'll have to confirm that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, what did, Alan? Uh excuse me.
January twelfth.
Thank you very much.
Uh Vice Chair, can I just add one thing for St. Louis Heights?
Yes.
Um just an update for those who have not seen it, though I hope you have seen it. For D T S, this also goes to transportation. They did repaint the crosswalks along Y Light Avenue. Um they've been working on it for the past month, extending the repainting, but that's just an update.
Yes, thank you. I I remember, I have seen that too.
Thank you.
Okay, uh Kapahulu Subdistrict two, Anthony?
Um yeah, one thing, uh spoke with a Kapahulu resident on Wynum and DeKella. Um he asked for a traffic study to be done uh to slow down motors. So I'll be reaching out to Councilmember Nishimoto's office for that. Um and one thing I did want to bring up uh is not really a report per se, but um we ask Anton every month about the traffic island in front of Leonard's and we're upset that cars keep hitting it. Um I don't, um what, what, what do we want to see out of that? Because I don't mind people messing up their cars if they're just not good drivers. Um but are we looking for more pedestrian safety? Are we looking for
I, I
Motors to drive faster?
I think this is um one of Winston's complaints. He, he, I think he wants it painted so that it's more visible.
But, but to what? Yeah, so I'll, I'll connect with Winston.
Yeah, I I can't answer.
Thank you.
And then we have the Diamond Head Subdistrict three, Linda?
Um now, since I talked to the parade office, the people are coming to tell us about the street closures. So um what I think Curtis did, he put the link for the street closures under the Department of Transportation on the agenda. So if you have a virtual copy of the agenda, you can just click on that and it'll give you all the street closures. So rather than reinventing the wheel, you can just go to the hot, hot link on the agenda and you'll see all the street closures. Uh so that was a good idea, Curtis. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then um let's see, reports of of board members attending other boards or meetings. Anybody would like to report on any meetings they went to? All right, since we have a few minutes, I'll report. Okay, so I went to a couple of meetings, public meetings regarding the North Shore erosion control. It has to do with the houses falling into the water on the North Shore. And there's um Sea Grant from the U H is, has a grant to conduct a study for the beach between Sunset and Sharks Cove. And so although it's not in our district, if you're an ocean, you know, go up to the, most of us go to the North Shore at some point. It does concern us all. And um it does, it will affect the decisions of how the city and state proceed on the uh management of these homes will, I think, affect what we end up doing in this area as well. So it's, it's a interesting, um there's public meetings if uh that are gonna, another public meeting is gonna be held on the North Shore. I'm not sure the exact date, but we can make sure it gets announced if anyone's interested, because it, it, it will affect us. Anyone on this island, really. And um I think that was the other issue that I went to another meeting uh with the Friends of Koalos. And they're trying to, uh they've been trying for the last twenty years to prevent the building of residential homes on the Makas side, Makas side of the Alamoana Boulevard in Kakaako. And that was a brown field. And it's, there have been several environmental reports done throughout the years that show that it's extremely toxic site. And there's a, there's a law that was made um that was passed by the city, I think in two thousand and six, stating that uh no residential buildings could be built on that house, on that property in that area due to health concerns and environmental concerns. So it, um Eric, now OHA was a get, has taken over the ownership of that land and they are really trying to develop that property for hotels and resi, high-rise residential. So Friends of Koalos is trying to make everyone aware of that and um is trying to prevent the high-rise, keep the open spaces, and also potentially, you know, prevent a huge environmental disaster.
Acting Chair, I would just like to support your comments on that. I was part of that whole planning process from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven when the H C D A approved the master plan to keep the entire shoreline of Kakaako Makai open as a park space with uh open as a park space with entertainment and recreational facilities for the people of Honolulu. And OHA came in and they claimed a certain parcels. And now they're, over the last many years, they have proposed developing those parcels into high-rise residential developments. And I really appreciate your support and your interest in this issue. I think we all need to join on this as we have the Ala White Bridge and various other impacts to our island. This is the last remaining shoreline open space that we have. And it's purely recreational. There's so many surfers that use this. And friends of Koalos, along with the Kakaako Makai Advisory Council, have been very active on this issue for many years. So thank you very much for becoming involved in this.
Thank you, Michelle. And if anyone wants to get involved, you can check out their website, Friends of Koalos. And they have meetings and rallies and, and the legislation period that's coming up. There's concern that there's going to be a law that's going to try to be passed that's going to overturn the law that was made preventing residential use. So everybody, everybody needs to be made aware of that. And with that, I think I'm done. Anybody else?
Um, Vice Chair, this is Angie. Yeah, just for other meetings, I just wanted to invite board members in the community. Next Monday is the Neighborhood Plan Committee. So part of the Neighborhood Commission, we have different subcommittees. One of them is revising the neighborhood plan, which governs how our neighborhood boards operate. We're going, they've been on a two-and-a-half-year journey on the complaints chapter. Hopefully, we're moving past it. But just, I want to encourage those on the board and those who attend the meetings to learn more about it. And then the following Monday should be our Neighborhood Commission meeting as well. And all is invited.
Where would I find information on that meeting?
On the NCO's website.
Okay.
So we're, on the NCO's website, you can see the different neighborhood boards and you can also see the Neighborhood Commission. And so, just to clarify, the Neighborhood Plan is a subcommittee. And so, or not subcommittee, but it is a committee. So you might have to see that folder for the agendas. But yeah. Just encourage.
Well, what, all right, thank you, Angie.
Yeah, you can also just subscribe to the things, but I'll try to forward it to you guys or I'll ask Curtis to help me.
Okay. All right, so we have Rafi. Rafi?
Yeah, hello. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Velasco. It's to put an attention to you all. Our upcoming Christmas parade in our place that started from the Kaimuki one. It is actually started from the St. Louis, you know, that, that circle about. So if you want to join with that, Regency Park where I live, we have some arrangement of parking. Just let me know if you are coming, so I can arrange for the parking for you guys. And also, December 4th is our Kaimuki Christmas parade.
Okay, oh, all right, I realize that we need to go to announcements next. Agenda requests, we want to request, if you want something on the agenda two weeks, at least two weeks prior to the meeting, contact Chair Welch and Kurt. Next meeting will be of our Neighborhood Board 5 in St. Louis will be held December 11th, Thursday, right here and on the web. And let's see, the board meetings can be viewed on Channel 49 at 9:00 PM on the fourth Sunday of the month and at 2:00 PM on the first Thursday of the month. Let's see. You can subscribe to the Neighborhood Board Commission YouTube channel and watch board meetings on demand. That's on the agenda too. Reporting neighborhood issues, you can do that to, there's a, on our agenda, all the links are listed. So if you're interested in this, I recommend you go to the announcement section 12 and you look at all the links. There's a lot of really good information in there right now. And I think that that's it. I think we have a whopping four minutes. So, um, let's see, do we, I think we are done for tonight. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for your participation and comments. And we'll, don't forget, you can always reach out to Curtis, and I do frequently. Doesn't have to wait for the next meeting. Because lots of issues are coming up. All right, thank you. Adjourned.